Mic phones off again. We could begin to find our seats. At this time, I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order. Let the record reflect that it's Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Uh, 8:26 PM. We do apologize for the delay. Uh, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor.
Will now be recorded.
Not starting that over, so. Uh, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in Public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to COVID-19 pandemic. Pursuant to the same, the village board finds that it would be impractical to conduct an in-person meeting with all members present. Uh, I'd ask at this time that the elected officials confirm that they can all hear. We're all here, so you can all hear us, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Um.
No.
Yes.
After members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. Once the chair has a list of all public commenters, I don't think we have any tonight, right? So it's anybody that's present, so I'll leave it at that. Um, for the record, there is nothing dropped off in the clerk's mailbox or via email to participate telephonically, correct? And then finally, uh, each vote taken this evening will be conducted by, can be conducted by a roll call. So at this time, we could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Glutz.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Present, thank you. It's great to be back. I think we're all here tonight, yeah, it looks like, yeah, we're good. Um, so it's great to be back here in Village Chambers. Item number one, this time I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Properly moved.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Trustee Mueller, all in favor, is this now roll calling too? Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item two, at this time I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the regular village board meeting that was held on August 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Seconded by Trustee Brennan, seconded by Trustee Berg. Roll call.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item three, this time we'll call on Trustee Brennan for a swearing-in ceremony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to conduct a swearing-in ceremony for firefighter Paul Cordero and firefighter Brian Wagner.
Very good. Chief?
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Board and everybody else.
We're here.
Everybody wonder. Uh, again, a momentous occasion in the firefighter's career is this swearing-in, this initial badge fitting with the fire department. Uh, as a testament to the quality of our testing process, application, interview committee here, two outstanding candidates joining as our membership here this evening. I'll first introduce to the board firefighter six hundred and thirty in the one hundred and nineteen year condition of the Tinley Park Fire Department. This is firefighter Paul Cordero. Paul was born in Rio Paderas, Puerto Rico, moved to Florida, and found his way to Illinois where he met his wife Kristen. Paul and Kristen are parents of two sons, Elias and Bryce. Paul has served our country as a member of the US Marine Corps uh, for five years of active service and continued his military career by joining the careers after completing his active duty. Paul completed his basic operations of firefighting in Roman Romeo Fire Academy in 2019. And he is a first-generation firefighter who also shares his firefighting skills with the Cole City Fire Department and is currently working on obtaining his paramedic license to veteran services he can provide to the community. So Paul, welcome to the fire department. Governor, Commissioner, Chief, Attorney, and Clerk, do your village swearing-in.
I state your name.
I, Paul Cordero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of firefighter.
The duties of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Let me face me, I don't have to repeat this back. This is the firefighter's oath of office. I, Paul Cordero, declare that my fundamental duty is to serve the people that I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life and property against fire and other perils, and to uphold the standards of my profession. I will never allow my personal feelings nor danger to self deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter. I will respect the property and rights of all I serve and respect the officers, the members, and the operations of the Tinley Park Fire Department. I recognize that the badge of my office is a symbol of public faith and trust, and I will remember that at all times I represent the Tinley Park Fire Department and our community and will conduct myself accordingly. As a member of the Tinley Park Fire Department, I self, I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor. You accept your oath of office.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, welcome to the fire department. And in our tradition here, I'll present Paul with his badge. He gets to hold it for about three minutes here because in the fire service, we believe that the badge of a firefighter is always earned and never given. It will take Paul one year during his probationary time with the fire department to earn this badge, at which time, in a private ceremony at the fire department, his family and his peers will award him his badge to pin on who he was given. So, Paul, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Here's your badge.
Thanks, sir.
Hold it for a couple of minutes, check out your number, make sure it's all right there. I know the little ones went to sleep in the car and you missed the introductions, so if you, real quickly, just like to give them a little thanks and welcome here.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm trying to move up and better myself as a firefighter, so I'm constantly training, uh, whether it's through the Tinley Department or through a different department. I bring any training that I've today gained from other departments into this department. And, uh, I'm hoping that I can be of great service to Tinley Park.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And right. Okay, to the village again, I would like to introduce, uh, our board and our entire community here to firefighter Brian Wagner. Brian grew up in Beecher, Illinois, and became a Tinley Park resident in 2018. Brian began his fire service career in 2011 with the Creek Township Fire Protection District and then with the Cankey Fire Department. Brian is a licensed paramedic and currently shares his firefighting skills with the Failsides Fire Protection District. Brian and his wife Jamie are expecting their first child in March of 2021. Congratulations, Brian.
I solemnly.
I, Brian Wagner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of firefighter.
The duties of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And again, badge number six hundred and thirty-one presented to Brian Wagner. I, Brian Wagner, declare that my fundamental duty is to serve the people that I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life and property against fire and other perils, and to uphold the standards of my profession. I will never allow my personal feelings nor dangers to self deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter. I will respect the property and rights of all I serve and respect the officers, members, and operations of the Tinley Park Fire Department. I recognize that the badge of my office is a symbol of public faith and trust, and I will remember that at all times I represent the Tinley Park Fire Department, our community, and will conduct myself accordingly. As a member of the Tinley Park Fire Department, I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor. You accept your oath of office.
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the fire department, Brian.
Bye.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Introduce your family, I want to introduce your family real quick, and I know that you're.
Um, just wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity, uh, being a resident here of Tinley Park, constantly watching the guys going out. Uh, I have no greater love for the fire service and be able to return the favor by serving the people that I live with. It's a great honor, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Trustee Brennan. Item four, this time I'd ask the board to consider appointing uh, Justice Butella to the position of maintenance technician effective September 2nd, 2020. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Properly moved.
Second.
Properly seconded, thank you. With the retirement of an employee in May of 2020, the position of maintenance technician became available in our public works department. Based upon, based on recommendations from the water sewer superintendent, Joe Fitzpatrick, and the current director of public works, John Urbansky, seasonal two employee, Justice Butella was identified as a highly qualified candidate based on his work performance. Butella had previously interviewed for the position in January of 2020. Butella is a graduate of Victor J. Andrew High School and has previously worked as a summer seasonal and as a seasonal two since October 21st, 2019. This time I'd ask the board to consider appointing Mr. Butella to the position of maintenance technician effective September 2nd, 2020. Um, that'd be a roll call. Mr. Butella, you're here too, right? Why don't you come down to the podium, front and center? I won't make you say anything, but if you feel like you want to. So you see me nodding my head, right? What do you have to say?
I would like to, um, uh, gather my thoughts really quick. I served the past year with the public works department in the water department. Uh, I've tried to take advantage of as much information as I can gather. Uh, everything that I can learn, I'm making sure that I do that. I'm eager to do more, um, with, you know, getting my CDL, uh, and more qualifications so I can help the department and the village more. Um, but I'm looking forward to getting this opportunity, um, to moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Great thoughts.
Excellent.
Way to, yeah, way to pull them together. Papa Jacoby problem. All right, uh, we'll call a roll call on this, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Congrats.
Motion carries, what time you start tomorrow?
Uh, 7:00 AM.
Seven, six, what?
Six forty-five.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll see you bright and early. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Item five, Trustee Berg.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to consider adopting ordinance 2020-049, amending various sections of Title III, Chapter 32 of the Tinley Park Village Code pertaining to the merger of the Community Resources and Marketing and Branding Commissions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. The village currently has two commissions, the Community Resource Commission and the Marketing and Branding Commission, which both work to promote the village. At the August 18th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting, staff proposed a restructure that would combine both commissions into one with the purpose of supporting the village's current goals and objectives. The new commission would have three subcommittees that will work collaboratively to support Tinley Park activities and events, the village's tourism initiatives and brand, and the village's community involvement engagement strategies. The Committee of the Whole was in favor of the moving forward with this recommendation, and a draft ordinance was prepared by the village attorney. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Berg. Um, any comments from the board? Any comments in the public regarding this adoption? Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carry, thank you. Item six, at this time I'd ask the board to consider the following commission appointments for the fiscal year. Um, you all have a listing of the commissions? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, thank you. Um, as is noted, the appointments, the new appointments are depicted with an asterisk next to them. Um, we have, at the great effort of marketing, we were able to put together, um, some social media posts that, uh, requested volunteers this year. So we're happy to report that we actually had some residents that were willing to volunteer for the village and, and fill some of these, um, these positions within our commission structure. So, um, again, it's a great year, uh, for commissions. Uh, we appreciate the volunteers and all the hard work that they do. There's no questions from the board? Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you. Item seven, this time I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of the following consent agenda items. Items, excuse me.
Item.
We need a motion, right?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Clerk, would you read these into the record, please?
Item A, consider requests from People's Animal Welfare Society, also known as PAWS, to conduct a raffle due Sunday, November 15th, 2020, with the maximum value of the prize not to exceed $1,850. Winners will be drawn at PAWS 8301-191st Street. And item B, consider payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $1,387,312.77 as listed on the vendor board approval reports dated August 21st and August 28th, 2020.
Thank you, Clerk. Does any board member care, remove any of these consent agenda items? There are none, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you, motion will carry. Item eight, Trustee Mueller.
I motion we consider ordinance 2020-0-050 approving a special use for a planned unit development with exceptions related to Phase One of the redevelopment of Tinley Park Plaza located at 15915 through 16205 South Harlem Avenue.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
The petitioner, Andrew Balzar Bricksmore, uh, is seeking a special use for a planned unit development with exceptions related to Phase One of the redevelopment of Tinley Park Plaza located at 15915 through 16205 South Harlem Avenue. The project will include the demolition of 87,000 square feet of existing building on the northern portion of the center of the construction of the core and shell of approximately 66,000 square feet for retail uses, including facade improvements, landscaping, and parking lot improvements. The plan commission held a public hearing on August 20th, 2020 concerning the planned unit development and voted five to zero to recommend approval of special use and adopt the findings of fact in accordance with the plans as listed in the review of plans as noted in the staff report dated August 20th, 2020. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller, again for first reading. Any comments on the board? Uh, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
No.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you. Item nine.
I move we consider resolution 2020-R-085 authorizing the execution of a tax increment finance redevelopment agreement within the 159th and Harlem Tiff District.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Bear with me, this is a long one. This item would authorize a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement within the 159th and Harlem Tiff District for the proposed revitalization portions of the Tinley Park Plaza Shopping Center on the east side of Harlem Avenue, south of 159th Street. The Tinley Park Plaza Shopping Center opened in approximately 1974 and was significantly extended circa 1984 through 1998. Redevelopment at the south and north ends of the center occurred between 2004 and 2006, in 2015 and 2016, respectfully, which included demolition or reconstruction of portions of the inline center and construction of two freestanding outlet buildings. The beneficial owners of the center since 1995, Bricksmore, have had success in leasing the newer and renovated spaces but find the older spaces more difficult to lease and reoccupy due to changing needs and demands of the brick and mortar retail marketplace. To address these issues, Bricksmore has proposed significant renovations including demolish, demolition of approximately 87,000 square feet of existing inline shopping center construction, new retail tenant spaces, and performing other renovations and upgrades to the Tinley Park Plaza Shopping Center at an estimated total cost of $21.9 million. This project will separate the current inline retail buildings into two structures while simultaneously providing improved loading dock and service access to the rear of the buildings to facilitate tenant merchandise deliveries. But for the village's assistance toward the project, the renovations would not be able to move forward in current tenant interest, and locating the center would be lost, and the shopping center would be adversely impacted. The agreement proposes village financial assistance in the amount not to exceed 9.9 million or 50% of the actual project cost, whichever is lower. This assistance will be funded by a combination of Tiff incremental revenues generated at the shopping center properties alone and incremental municipal sales tax of 1% generated by all businesses located in the shopping center over a 10-year period. A maximum of 8.1 million of the Tiff eligible costs will be paid by the Tiff increment generated, with the remainder 1.8 million to be paid by the incremental sales tax. A portion of the increment incentive to be funded between the Tiff eligible costs and the sales tax can fluctuate based on actual expenses, but in addition to the overall 9.9 million cap on the financial assistance noted earlier, the amount cannot be provided from the municipal sales tax component, and that cannot exceed 2.5 million. Under long-established fiscal policies regarding incentives, the village does not look to share sales tax it may already be receiving in business expansion and redevelopment agreements such as this. The village has always looked for a share of the portion of increased incremental tax that are expected to result. Following these principles, incremental sales taxes are computed in reference to the base using 1% municipal sales tax generated collectively by the shopping center retailers during calendar year 2019. If a retailer currently located elsewhere in Tinley Park relocates to Tinley Park Plaza during the term of the agreement, the sales tax they generated over the previous 12-month period will be added to the base. However, in the incentive year where Tinley business has first relocated, the amount attributed to the base will be prorated based on how many months of that incentive year the business was operating in Tinley Park Plaza. As with most village incentive agreements, the burden is heavily on the developers to achieve the maximum amount of the incentive. If the property or sales tax increments do not materialize at the levels anticipated to fulfill the total support offered, it directly affects the amount of assistance that will be provided over the 10-year period of the agreement. Conversely, the project is successful in attracting new retail to the center as anticipated. It will also be possible for the agreement to be fulfilled in less than the 10 years provided under this agreement. This item was reviewed and discussed at the community of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting and is eligible for first reading tonight. Thank you, Brad, for the very verbose.
I was gonna say, what did you do to piss him off? Jeez. It's gonna go down as one of the longest discussion items ever.
And he's got four, four more.
Well, if there's any questions after that, I'd question whether or not you could read, but, um, are there any questions from the board? This is eligible for first reading this evening, so our final will be, uh, on the 15th. Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
No.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glutz.
No.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Uh, four to two, right?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Motion will carry, thank you. Uh, item 10.
I move we consider ordinance 2020-0-051 approving the annexation of certain properties located at 18017 Sayre Avenue to the village of Tinley Park.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
The petitioner, George Arnold, on behalf of Gamma Tinley LLC, has petitioned the village of Tinley Park to annex two parcels of property totaling approximately 1.74 acres at 18017 Sayre Avenue. One parcel has an existing home that will be demolished, and the other vacant parcel does not have any roadway frontage. The property owner has requested rezoning, a variation, and a platte subdivision related to a proposed expansion of the Fox College parking lot. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Um, are there any comments on the board?
Yeah, I just, uh, Jake, real quick, I believe this, this item, there was already a previous comment on that they wanted to make it the cow, so.
Oh, for the public, yeah, I covered that.
I just wanted to.
Yep, no, definitely we'll have that. Are there any comments from the board regarding the item, though, before I open it up to the public? Diane, do you have something?
Um, well, um, it, as long as there's somebody to come up and talk about it, I just wanted to find out, um, during the planning commission meeting, there was some residents that had issues. So it may be the same issue.
It will be. So this is eligible for first reading this evening. Uh, typically, we wouldn't open it for public, but because you mentioned already that you were interested in talking about the topics, so I asked you to step forward, um, approach the podium. And we appreciate you being here, and we'll try to answer your questions.
Well, actually, and I just wanted to let you know, it'll probably be up here for items 10, 11, 12, and 13 because they're all about the Fox College. Um, we have a issue in the neighborhood. First of all, you know, uh, one of the issues is most of the neighbors don't know that this is happening. I understand in Tinley Park, there's a 250-feet, uh, notice requirement. That doesn't even go halfway into my backyard. It, depending on where it starts, none of the neighbors know that this is happening. This is all coming at us from many different angles. I mean, my lot is a small lot, and it's 100 by 220. So, uh, a lot of people have one-acre lots out there. So I don't know where this is starting from, but people are not getting the information. As far as item 10 goes, you know, there, there's a lot of issues with the drainage area. I was speaking with Daniel Ritter, I believe he's the senior advisor. Uh, I spoke to him after the meeting on the 18th. I showed him pictures of what I call Lake Chigali, that is my last name, and it stands at the back of my lot, and it, it is just water standing all the way to Oak Park Avenue, and that is the detention basin that is, uh, part of the school. Um, it is not draining. It is draining onto my property and coming closer to my house. And that's 100 feet in my backyard. If we, if this proposal goes through, I'll have the additional 220 feet to the side. That'll be the north end of my lot, so I'll be surrounded by this. When I spoke to Daniel about the draining issue, he actually gave me a call, and he told me that there is an issue in that detention basin. And, um, as of last week, when we've had no rain for about two weeks now, today was one of the first days, it's still 80% full. So that's an issue. And if the current lot that's being built, it's not gonna be permeable soil, okay? So it's gonna go straight out. It's gonna come back into the detention basin that they're gonna build, the proposed build, as well as the detention basin that's currently owned by the school. And that's gonna hit my lot now at two sides. There's gotta be something, you know, we have to take a look at the current, current drainage, uh, in that area because it's not working like it's supposed to before we should even go here. You know, um, you guys are gonna be talking about, you know, 11 and 12, and I'll, and I'll wait, and I'll come back up here if you'd like me to. But, you know, there's other issues here as well.
If you wanna talk about those right now, that's fine, I mean, they're.
Is that right?
They're kind of relatively a companion ordinance generally. They're kind of relatively a companion ordinance, generally. Just to identify that issue, though, with the drainage, I think that's something that we certainly could handle through the Community Development Department, and certainly through our Public Works Department. I mean, you know, have you ever raised before, an issue before?
I, I mean, the-
Before this, before this development came up?
Yeah, I mean, earlier this year. I mean, it's getting, it's getting worse every year.
Okay, so it has been identified.
And I've, and I've been here since, you know, it'll be 20 years for me now, in the house and that lot. Initially, the lot was being cut. It was more of a grassy area, and it seemed to be okay, but now it's more of a natural foliage, and it's, and it's pretty. You've got butterflies, you've got all that other stuff out there, but I don't know if that's getting into and clogging some parts of the system. We had spoken about the sanitary area over there, and then also the storm drains and stuff like that previously. And Daniel got back to me, and I've gotten back to some of the neighbors about it, but the fact is that this detention area was supposed to help us in the neighborhood, and it's really not helping.
Okay.
It's actually, you know, things are getting a little worse. Now, to have another one where, you know, the, the parking lot, you know, when I take a look at it, it's about half an acre large, so it's just gonna shed water into the surrounding areas. And that's going to most definitely hit the school detention area, and as well as the one that's being built to the side. So, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would probably pause for a moment. I mean, I'm, development issues, the water, the WMO, right, isn't that, don't they require a certain of storage per, I don't know if it's per square foot or what, when it comes to, um, non-permeable payment?
The detention pond that they're designing as a development, they're required to retain that water on their site and, and disperse it accordingly. So, it was noted that there appears to be some functioning issues with the existing pond that is adjacent to the school that this resident is mentioning. So, our village engineer did go out on the site, and he does, does believe there are some issues with the current piping system when he was looking at the inlet. So, we, and, and the village are encouraging Fox College and the school, there are coordinating efforts to find out what is, what is happening. Maybe there's, maybe something's in there that's clogged or something that we acknowledge that something isn't functioning right, so they are, they are looking into that. And Fox College wants to rectify that as well, because they're, you know, they're designing their pond, you know, to be connecting to this pond.
Yeah.
So, that is one item. But this area also is in floodplain, so it kind of floods naturally in some of these areas, but this pond will have to retain all the water from their site.
Yeah, I mean, there's, should be ample enough retention area over there, if I remember correctly the, the layout. Between Fox and the auto body, you have that, and then you have behind there that runs north-south. I mean, there should be ample to cover that. It, it's-
Yeah, but it appears, it appears, our, when our engineer went out there, and I don't know if John wants to add to it, but it appears that there's something isn't functioning with the, with the inlet right now. As he mentioned, it's been dry, and there's still, there's significant amount of water in the-
So, I view this as two separate issues. I mean, they gotta, they have a situation outside of the development, I mean, with just the retention pond as it is, right? So, we're looking at that separately, separate of the development, right?
But the development's going to drain into that lot. I mean, there's no other way. If you take, I don't know if you could pull up a map of it, it, it's immediately to the south of it, and the floodplain in that area goes north to south in a westerly direction, which puts it immediately in my backyard and our surroundings.
I thought it was always a fairly stringent process regarding onsite retention outside of the jurisdiction of Tinley Park. I mean, right, I mean, they, they have some very stringent guidelines when it comes to that, so.
Yeah, I mean, you have the, you have the engineer of the development that's going to be designing the drainage, as you mentioned, to the new WMO, which requires onsite detention before releasing it into surrounding detention, which would then be bringing it to the adjacent basin. There's also the review from our local engineer, there's review from our contracted engineer, and ultimately, there's review from MWRD that would not allow the permit to move forward without their approval of how that design is going to be done underway. And as, you know, as we said, there has been some review of the current situation that showed some blockages out there, that is a maintenance issue that needs to be addressed, but some of the construction that would be getting done out there adjacent to that would be restructuring some of their current catch basins, or not catch basin, but culverts and piping that is in that area. But it is designed to have, currently to have a underground detention for all the impervious surfaces that this extension is being recommended to be constructed. So, it is meeting all the new WMOs, which are a lot more strict than previous ones for drainage.
Their, their plans for the expansion, that's, that's underground storage, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they'll be putting underground storage underneath the parking lot-
Got it.
Requesting.
Okay. All right, continue, sir, I'm sorry. I just wanted those, as we go, I mean, I know you're probably got a couple things here, so.
No, no problem.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, trust.
What are your thoughts, since there does seem to be some type of engineering problem, that we just, maybe just push this to the next board meeting, and give staff two weeks to get an answer?
This is first read, everything is subject to engineering, so I mean, permits wouldn't be issued, but I mean, it is first read, we can still, you know, see where we're at, where we're at.
Yeah, I would assume we'll have more information regarding that, but as I said, I think this is two separate issues. Despite the, put, you know, put the development aside, there's still an issue there that needs to be rectified, no matter what. So, I'm looking at this as a parallel path. But, go ahead, sir.
Okay, because, you know, one of the reasons I'm bringing this up is because part of that is going to go into the school's detention area. There's, unless you completely put a trench around it and have it directed just to the detention area that you're building, and then, you know, where's that water gonna go? You have, I think that partly covers some of 12, because we're talking about the drainage element, the over, and then there's the overland flowing detention area. You know, Sayer Avenue, just at that point, right around that area, is the lowest point in the street, and water pools, and we were talking about an additional storm drainage, but that, Mr. Ritter told me, was a floodplain, and it's the size of a floodplain, because we just have a difficult time getting water out of that area, as is. And the, the school's detention area will be directly in front of it. So, will it be spilling over to the street, or is it gonna make things better? You know, once again, that's a question. As far as 13 goes, once the, let's just say, you know, this all goes through, the plans, I guess, would be to, I'd ask for more of a cedar fence, as opposed to a plastic PVC fence, because the area just matches the area better. The auto lot currently has a white PVC fencing that goes around it and just stands out, whereas Fox College has, like, the cedar wood fence. Yes, it requires more maintenance, but it matches the area much better. And, you know, like everyone else in the area, we don't want our housing values to go down, and eventually, we, you know, if we do sell it, we'd like to have somebody sit in the backyard, which is what the lots are really designed for, and just be able to look out and to be looking out at white plastic fencing, it's just not the greatest thing. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was also the lighting. You guys are asking for the, I believe the legacy code is 15 feet, as far as the, the lighting goes, whereas you guys are asking for 25 feet. Those trees are gonna be cut back. It's, it's, that's gonna be basically, the detention area's gonna be all dug out, no more trees in that area until it grows out. It's either gonna be grass, or you guys are gonna let it go naturally, but all those trees are gonna be gone, which is gonna cause, you know, you have 25-foot light pole, and it's not just gonna be one, it's gonna be multiple in the parking lot, because we want safety, but it's gonna bleed into the area. I mean, that, that's where we live, and as you drive down the sea, street, you know, you're gonna be able to see it, so.
Can I ask, did you present at the plan commission meeting? Did you, did you go to the plan commission yourself and speak upon these things, or anybody in the audience do that?
I was only here on the 18th, which was the last meeting. And once again, this is because the, there was a sign in front of the house, and we looked it up, and I've walked down the street, and people were like, are you kidding me? There's gonna be this going on? I can't go, I have a dentist appointment, I can't go, multiple appointments. I, you know, one of my other neighbors is here, he lives across the street from me, and even he didn't know this was happening, and we came to the last meeting on the 18th.
All right, so, I would, I assume that everyone that's here is here to speak upon the same situation? Is anybody in favor of it, that wants to say their side of the story? Sir?
I'll stand down, thank you.
I'm, to be clear, I'm the attorney for the petitioner, I don't know if you want to appear to me or not.
Uh, so, yeah, so you're in favor of, obviously, the project. Why don't you come forward and tell?
My name is George Arnold, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, and yes, the gentleman just spoke, did, did come to the last meeting, and I know that he's been speaking to staff and, and talking about the detention. You know, Fox College has been here for a while and intends to stay here, that's why they're expanding. They're vested in the community, they're not just, you know, coming in, developing and leaving, so they're very, you know, concerned, as, as anyone, about the detention, and they're gonna work, continue to work with villages as they have, to meet all the standards, and then they will have to get approved by the MWRD as well, and meet all those standards. I am aware from talking to Mr. Ritter that when he went out to look at the school district, and just to be clear, I think it is clear, but when people are talking about the school's detention, they're not talking about the Fox College school's detention, it's the school district.
Central, yeah.
Right, so, I, I, my understanding when out there, they did find some problems with possible, you know, maintenance issues that they're going to address, and Mayor, I think you're correct, I think they're two separate issues, but certainly they're parallel issues, because we do intend to have our water flow into that, into the district's pond, so that's an issue we'll be looking at, looking at closely as well. Regarding the fence, we're, we're happy to, to, to give the cedar fence or provide the cedar fence. I think our original plan provided for that, and staff suggested the PVC, which we are happy to accommodate. I think from talking to Mr. Ritter, the staff is, is willing to accommodate the request from the neighbor and go back to a cedar, and we're fine with that, so whatever, whatever the village wants, we're, we're happy to do with regard to the fence. And the lighting, you know, we, we agree with the, the staff, as it was written in the report. We're asking for the poles to be consistent with the rest of them. Staff indicated that if we went to the shorter one, it would be, require more poles, so that would may result in more light seepage than otherwise would be, and we're far, you know, we're far off the road, so we think the lights, we're asking for appropriate, we agree with staff that they are, so we are asking for approval.
And are those, what are the timeline, timetables of how long the lighting is on? Is it all night long? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. I can find out, though, by the, for the next, the next 18th.
All right, I think that's, that's it for a question to ask.
Sure.
Is it possible to have the lights that are closer to the houses lower, or no?
We can check. I, I'll, I'll find out.
You know what I mean, maybe just-
Sure.
As you get closer.
Talking about brightness-wise? Not like, not height? Are you talking about height, or are you talking about?
The height.
Yeah, I think the height is the only variance. I think our bright, our, our brightness matches the code, so I don't think we're asking for a variance for that, I think it's just the height.
Just the height.
And we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I look at everyone's face, I think everyone else will agree, too. The fence, if that's what they're requesting, and that's what you guys requested, I understand where plan commission's coming from, I used to be over that department for two years, and, and they push hard for the PVC, because they don't want a neighbor to deal with maintenance issues when someone doesn't take care of it, but you don't want a big white fence sticking out in the middle of a wooded area.
Sure. We understand both ways, and we're happy to, to do whatever, whatever the village wants, so.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I, couple of questions, I guess, the fencing, if you can, I'm sure, that seems like that wouldn't be a problem, and it would make the neighbors happy. The lighting, like I said, if you could check and see if maybe we could tear it down, you know, from the 25 to 20 to 15, maybe, so it doesn't look so awkward, see how that would look, maybe? And then, the, the tension pond, I've, I've dealt with that kind of stuff a lot, and I know the engineering will say, you know, it should, it should hold it, and then it doesn't, you know, it just, something else happens in the neighborhoods, you know, and it shifts everything, and now it's just at full capacity. Is there any way to have that be dug any deeper?
So, we're, I mean, our engineers are working with the village engineers, and, and they will continue to do so, and continue to address, you know, whatever issues that are raised, either here tonight, or, or, you know, along the way, as they look more at the, at the district's existing detention pond. You know, the property is in a floodplain, so there's, you start, you start off with that, and then you try to meet whatever, or you do, you meet whatever engineering standards are required, and that's what we will do. So, certainly, if that's something that the village engineers want to look at, we're happy to look at it. We want to continue to work with the village every step, so.
If you could, I appreciate, because I, do you know what your elevation's gonna be compared to what it is? How, how much higher are you gonna be than it currently is?
I don't know what the exact elevations are now and what they're going to be, but I-
The higher it is, the harder it's gonna be for water to move.
Sure.
And which is gonna make the water stand around more. Yes, it eventually will drain over that way, but it's gonna take a lot longer, and by then, someone may have, you know, five feet of water in their basement.
Sure.
So, if you could look into those, couple of questions for the next meeting, that would be great.
Can I get clarification? John, you mentioned that this is onsite underground storage, right?
Currently, it's being designed for an under, underground storage under-
Under the parking lot, right? So, the parking lot itself is actually pitched inwards towards the-
Well, typically, the asphalt will be pitched to the catch basins, and then the catch basins will release it for the underground storage. It's, the, the WMO requires for a slower release of the storage capacity into their attack-
So, these are giant culverts that are underneath the parking lot?
Essentially, yes.
Usually, there's, like, if it's a box, it'd be in four corners.
Well, I mean, in, in layman's terms, there's, there's catch basins, which are just a pot underneath it, but because of the storage capacity, it's a large container, if you will. Typically, they do it with gravel and create, you know, kind of like underneath North, North Street. It's all gravel underneath there, and it's designed to hold the water for, for an amount of time before it's released back into the system.
So, there's not an additional natural retention they're building with this either, is there?
Uh, not that, not that I've seen on-
So, everything's onsite?
Yes. And then they are, they are also creating, because there is a drainage swell from the north to the south, they're adding, you know, infrastructure to allow for that to continue from, as the resident mentioned, that it has a natural, you know, want for the drainage to go from the north to south, so they have that also being designed into the underground infrastructure.
Thanks for the clarification. Anything you want to add, Trustee Mueller?
No, I guess from my perspective, you know, we're talking about the school's detention issue, and it's really Central Middle School. You know, Fox College is coming to us, and they're trying to expand, they're gonna be held to a greater standard than any water detention, you know, facilities that we've built over there in quite some time, just because of the new regulations, so. I, I'm okay with going through with first reading today, and then we get these issues addressed. I'll, I'll gladly make an amendment for the fence, I don't know which item to amend, so if you want to let me know that. And then, I believe it was Kobe that was working with Central Middle School, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, if we could find out more about that before the next meeting, I'd love to have, that issue needs to be addressed regardless of where we go with, with Fox College, right?
They can also put deflectors on the lights as well.
Yeah, they're, they typically deflect down, so, to try not to spill the light, but-
It's a flat lens now, they're pretty, really-
They are.
I mean, in your 104, you could, it's a-
Okay.
I mean, but to your point, it shouldn't be-
Pitched.
Adjusted, they should just be at a flat 90 degrees.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Is it for me?
Okay. Anything else on the board?
The only other question is, can we somehow get notice to the rest of the neighbors? Because it sounds like a lot of people don't even know, and I'd hate to have them all come in here as they're building, you know, after it's too late to even speak.
We can, I know Daniel's been in communication with residents, so we can reach out to them as well, again, as the next meeting.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, this has been promptly moved and seconded, and again, this is for first reading this evening and for the residents that are here. There's gonna be some amendments made to the ordinance before it's brought back before the board, which will be on September 15th, and that night, we'll do a final vote for the passage of these ordinances. And I would just mention again, you know, I appreciate you coming out and being part of the process, just for clarification and record's sake. For first reading events, we typically don't have a back-and-forth comment or question we typically don't have a back and forth comment or question, um, with the board. Uh, but given the COVID restrictions and all that that's going around, we certainly don't want you to have to sit here, uh, for the next meeting, et cetera. So appreciate you coming. Thank you for sharing your concerns with us. And definitely we'll work out, no matter the development, we'll work out the, the drainage situation with that.
Now, how does September 15th?
The, the next meeting, correct? Alright, uh, we'll call a roll on this, please.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry. Thank you. Item 11.
I move, we consider ordinance 2020-0-052 granting a map amendment to rezone certain properties located at 18017 Sayer Avenue upon annexation into the Neighborhood General Zoning District.
Excuse me, thank you.
Second.
Sorry, I was drinking some water.
No, you're good. The petitioner George, George Arnold, on behalf of Gamma Tinley LLC, is seeking to rezone the properties located at 18017 Sayer Avenue upon annexation to the NG zoning district. The property owner has requested rezoning, a variation, and a plat of subdivision related to a proposed expansion of the Fox College parking lot. The parking lot expansion would net a total of 88 parking stalls on the site and allow Fox College to expand its curriculum at its existing location. The area is highly encumbered by a floodplain and the development plans include extensive engineering and detention to accommodate all stormwater that is existing and will be produced by the site. The plant commission held a public hearing on August 20th, 2020 and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the map amendment. In accordance with all plans as listed in the listed reviewed plans and the finding of fact on August 20th, 2020, staff report. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Any comments on the board? Again, for first reading, um, roll call.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz? Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry. Thank you. Item 12.
I move, we consider resolution 2020-R-086 approving and accepting a final plat of the Fox College re-subdivision at certain property located at 18017 Sayer Avenue and 1802 Oak Park Avenue.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Thank you.
The petitioner George Arnold, on behalf of Gamma Tinley LLC, has requested final plat approval for Fox College re-subdivision associated with the proposed parking lot expansion. The plat will consolidate two parcels at the existing Fox College site located at 18020 Oak Park Avenue and two additional parcels proposed to be annexed and rezoned for the parking lot expansion at 18017 Sayer Avenue. Additionally, the drainage easement will be recorded over the proposed overflow, over land flow and detention area. The plant commission reviewed the plat, final plat of re-subdivision with the recommended condition that the approval is subject to final engineering plan approved by the village engineer on August 20th, 2020, and voted five to zero to recommend approval. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thank you. Any comments on the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item 13?
Last one for Fox College. Um, I move, we consider ordinance 2020-0-053 granting a variation from section, is it 12 dot 3 dot 1 dot 7, legacy code lighting standards of the zoning ordinance at property located at 18017 Sayer Avenue and 18020 Oak Park Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, the petitioner George Arnold, on behalf of Gamma Tinley LLC, is seeking a variation from section 12 dash 3 dot 1 dot 7 of the zoning ordinance to permit a different light pole type and permit a light fixture to be mounted at a height of 25 feet at the Fox College properties located at 18017 Sayer Avenue and 18020 Oak Park Avenue in the NG zoning district. Upon annexation and rezoning, the lights associated with the parking lot expansion would net a total of 88 parking stalls on the site to allow Fox College to expand its curriculum at its existing location. The area is highly encumbered by a floodplain and development plans include extensive engineering and detention accommodate all stormwater that is existing and will be produced by the site. The plant commission held a public hearing on August 20th, 2020 and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the three variations and adopt the findings of fact in accordance with plans as listed and the listed reviewed plans as indicated in the August 20th, 2020 staff report. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Any comments on the board? Uh, roll call.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14?
I move, we consider adopting ordinance 2020-0-054 granting a special use permit for a childcare center to Dreamland Academy at 7901 167th Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The petitioner, uh, on behalf of Dreamland Academy, is seeking a special use permit to operate a childcare facility at 7901 167th Street in the R6 PD zoning district. The location had previously been utilized as a daycare facility by Bobby Noonan's Childcare since 1978. The new daycare facility is expected to have considerable fewer children than previous operator. The location has limited parking, but the petitioner will continue to monitor to avoid any parking in the adjacent residential areas and has come to a verbal agreement for overflow at the neighboring church. The plant commission held a public hearing on August 20th, 2020 and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the special use with recommended conditions in accordance with the plans as listed in the listed reviews plans and findings of fact in the August 20th, 2020 staff report. This order, this ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments on the board?
Yeah, um, just a quick question. Uh, Kimberly, this, this, there was a couple concerns about this location and, uh, the parking and the drop off. Have, have those been worked out with the, with the petitioner? And, um, I know there's a verbal agreement, but it, can you kind of detail what?
Um, I mean, as a condition of this approval, um, they are, uh, working on that. So they haven't had problems in the past, but that will be, um, something we'll need to confirm before we approve it.
I mean, that's been a problem for 35 years.
Right, right.
It's my alma mater.
A, as of recently, I just, I, I had, I had a resident.
Nobody caught that?
Watched me at the fire, fire department, ribbon cutting and, uh, the firehouse ribbon cutting and dedication, it's been an issue. So it's just an odd location for that and, you know, I'll make sure that, that's something that we, that we addressed. I mean, it's, uh, you know, I know, uh, they're saying that there's, there's going to be less, um, kids. Yeah, less kids, I guess, is a, is a good thing, but, you know. We can't prevent their business expansion, so it may be good now, but maybe not next year, so just a concern, but.
So will staff provide a, just a, a better or a, a single out update just on that for this item for the next meeting then?
And then these items, because this is a special use, if it becomes a problem and we get complaints, this, we can then come back and, you know, make them adjust their.
Sure.
Their use or something, so.
Okay. This, this isn't a first reading?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's up for adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is up for adoption.
Thousand pardons.
I mean, that's, that's going to be the condition of their approval. If they have, if they start to have traffic concerns, then we can revoke their, you know, their special use. Just like with drive-throughs or any other businesses. We, we review it and we, you know, if there's problems down the road and, or conditions change, like say they get more children or something, a problem, then, then we would, we would, we could revoke their special use or make them modify the conditions to address these issues.
Did Bobby Noonan have an agreement with the church?
Uh, I don't know if it was a formal agreement. Um, I don't know if we had anything like that.
Presumably they'd say to their customers, if there's overflow, go park at the church and wait to get in or.
That's how I understand it. They have, we've got a lot of people, we have verbal agreements in town.
Anything from the side of the dis?
No, I mean, has there been a lot of complaints and are they? This has been open all, just, it just, it's just change in ownership, right?
That's correct.
So is there a, like, plan for pickup and drop off that's in place?
Yeah, I mean, you, and they, they have a, they have in their, um, the ability to, at the site now, you can pull in. It's not like a big parking lot, but yeah, it's, you have the ability to pull in, drop the kid off and leave it on a corner there.
I mean, it's literally been the same plan for 30 plus years. I mean, I'm, we're doing it with my family.
I'm sure, yeah, maybe, um, you know, obviously COVID is changing. I know my daycare is changing a little bit, but, um, I mean, typically it's, it's pretty quick. You're in and out. It's not a long, a long stay and it's, you know, during certain times.
Alright, well, I would suggest that you just monitor it and then if we have to reevaluate it at a later time, we will. Fair enough. Uh, anybody from the audience care to comment regarding this item for adoption? There's none? Please call a roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 15?
Trustee Brennan was going to take this one.
Uh, he said 15?
Yeah.
Alright, um, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting ordinance 2020-0-055 granting a storage shed setback variation for certain property located at 16701 Odell Avenue. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. The petitioners Daniel and Deborah Shanahan are seeking a variation from the section 3 dot I of the zoning ordinance to permit a replacement of a storage shed utilizing the existing concrete pad that is located approximately one foot from the side of, the side and rear property lines instead of the required minimum setback of five feet at 167 Odell Avenue in the R4 zoning district. The petitioners wish to replace their deteriorating 64 square foot storage shed with a new one that is similar in height, size, and style. The zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 13th, 2020 and voted three zero to recommend approval of the amended variation in request, uh, in accordance with the plans as listed in the reviewed, list of reviewed plans in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption. Thank you, Bill. Any comments on the board? Any comments from the public? There are none, then, uh, please call a roll, clerk.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 16?
I move, we consider adopting ordinance 2020-0-056 granting a corner fence variation for certain property located at 6342 Arcadia Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. The petitioner, Michael Carr, is seeking a variation from section 3 dot J of the zone, zoning ordinance to permit a six-foot high privacy fence to extend into the required secondary front yard for the property located at 6342 Arcadia Drive in the R4 zoning district. The petitioner originally requested an encroachment of 12 feet onto the required 25-foot secondary front yard setback for privacy fence. Upon discussing with the zoning board of appeals, the petitioner agreed to amend it, the request, to be a 10-foot encroachment, which would place it the 15 feet from the property line and to construct the fence in a shadow box style. The zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 13th, 2020 and voted three to zero and recommend approval of the amended variation request in accordance with the plans listed in the listed, list of reviewed plans in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you. Any comments on the board? Any comments in the public? There are none? Please call a roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 17?
I move, we consider adopting ordinance 2020-0-057 granting a special use permit for a substantial deviation from the Mercury Business Center PUD with exceptions from the zoning ordinance for Hailstorm Brewing Company located at 8060 186th Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The petitioner, Christopher Schiller, on behalf of Tomcat Properties and Hailstorm Brewing Company, is seeking a special use permit to install a permanent exterior patio adjacent to the restaurant and taproom. The request includes exceptions to the zoning ordinance to permit a fence to be located in the front yard and minimum parking requirements. The plant commission held a public hearing on August 20th, 2020 and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the special use permit with recommended conditions in accordance with the plans as listed in the listed reviewed plans and finding the fact in the August 2020, August 20th, 2020 staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Uh, there any comments on the board?
I'll just say I've been up to their temporary one and it's, it's great, so, um, looking forward to them making it permanent out there.
Drive safely. Any other, any other comments? Is Mr. Schiller still on the phone? Can you hear us? Does he have any comments?
Oh, I am here. Uh, so, I think the plans that we put together were, uh, fairly comprehensive there. The fence and the style looks like a, see through, like a wrought iron style, so minimal, uh, minimal visibility.
Well, if memory serves me correct, this has been something you guys have been requesting for quite a long time and we just want to say thank you for your continued, uh, continued perseverance to make this, uh, uh, this, this come true, so appreciate it, Mr. Schiller. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Will Tinley?
Uh, there's no other questions from the board or any comments from the public? There's none? Please call a roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry. Thank you. Item 18, trustee Glotz.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting resolution 2020-R-084 approving a contract between the village at Tinley Park and M.E. Simpson Company for the water assessment program.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Consider rewarding a contract to M.E. Simpson Company in the amount 149,300. Item was discussed at the COW held on August 18th, 2020. Resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board? Any comments from the public? Please call a roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz? Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 19, pre, receive comments from the staff this evening? No comments from staff? Very good. Uh, item 20, receive comments from the board?
I just want to, um, mention the, it's a very successful music in the park. Um, really was a great time, nice weather. Um, thank you for inviting trustees up to give out the awards with you. Um, it was really fun. The entire evening was really fun and just want to say thank you to, uh, Vicki. Um, honestly, I see her, she, they, your whole staff is, they go above and beyond taking care of everything, so it's just perfect for when the event comes on, so thank you, thank you for that.
I'd just like to add on, uh, what Diane said. Certainly the benches on Oak Park Avenue, every year, the mayor mentioned it that night, would just make our, our Oak Park Avenue just so nice and colorful. And, uh, it's amazing the amount of talent that we have within Tinley Park and the cooperation with the warehousing and the paints, just everything they do. Uh, it was just a, it's been beautiful as it is all these years. It was just excellent.
Very good. Anything else?
I've got one.
Um, I'll, I have, if you have something, go ahead.
I just want to say, over the weekend, we had some vandalism in the Brookside Glen neighborhood. And I wanted to thank John Urbansky in the Public Works Department, along with, uh, Scott Kreider of Kreider Painting, Painting, who helped Sam blast away that graffiti, um, at no cost to the village. Um, so I went by a little later on this afternoon today and saw that it was all cleaned up and really appreciate the fast, fact, fast action out of our Public Works Department and, uh, and Scott himself, so really appreciate it, John.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Mueller. Um, I'll close it out by saying, I, I opened this meeting by saying it was great to be back. Um, I truly mean that, but I think it's important for, uh, the public and certainly the staff and the rest of the elected officials. So thank you very much for your patience while I was, um, vacant from in-person, um, board meetings. And for those that, uh, do know what I do for a living and those that don't, um, I, unfortunately, having to immerse myself within the parameters of COVID-19 and not knowing whether or not I expose myself on a daily basis, I felt that it was my duty, um, to protect individuals that I surround myself around. I felt that it was my duty, um, to protect individuals that I surround myself around. So, um, that is the reason why I have not been at any board meeting or, um, meeting. Um, I know there's been a lot of questions out there asking why I haven't been participating, but that is the answer. Um, I felt that it was my duty to do so, uh, but I is glad to be back here and being, uh, with all of you. Uh, despite our differences, it's great to see all your faces, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking our health into consideration, Mr. Mayor.
Item twenty, uh, item twenty-one, receive comments on the public? Conveniently waited outside.
Why does Michael Glotz spend so much time far in excess of the six minutes afforded to any other speaker to falsify and misrepresent facts? Because corrupt politicians use the privilege of office to try to divert attention from their own misconduct. While Glotz is quick to fabricate lies and personally attack anyone who disagrees with him, and quick to happily make the motion to appoint a new department head at the last meeting, Glotz is then silent regarding the report of concerns that detail sexual harassment, arrests for domestic battery, his use of village credentials to bully his way backstage at the Music Theater, and the allegations made by employees that he took a brand-new high ranger out of state to do personal work, in addition to lies that cost tens of thousands of dollars in FOIA litigation. I have appeared here since two thousand and ten, and with the help of many dedicated people have addressed issues that have resulted in numerous positive changes for the village and have saved taxpayers millions of dollars. In two thousand and sixteen, Glotz and I and many others sat together at meetings and worked together on behalf of taxpayers. Time constraints preclude a review of the hundreds of his emails and text messages received from him since then that have revealed his true character of dishonesty, racism, sexism, and bullying. It is now the consensus of opinion of many of those who helped get elect, or helped him get elected, is that he's the most corrupt person to ever sit on this dais. Supporting him was a huge mistake, and as he, as he has now proven, he has neither the integrity nor the maturity to hold elective office. Trustee Glotz has distinguished himself as the most corrupt, not only because of his pattern of lies, but also because of his extraordinary efforts to hide the truth about what goes on behind closed village doors, as well as his recently purported, purporting to take official action when he had no authority to do so. One of Glotz's campaign promises was to prohibit part-time elected officials from taking taxpayer-funded pensions. Yet, the first thing he did after being elected in two thousand and seventeen was to enroll in IMRF. While Glotz always complains about legal bills, he also ignores mentioning that it costs taxpayers almost sixty thousand dollars because of Mr. Brennan's and Mr. Mueller's relatives filing nominating petition objections for the two thousand and nineteen election. It is well-known to many elected and appointed officials that he has directed village attorneys to waste as much, particularly my, time and money with regard to FOIA and litigation. Yet, he only hurts the taxpayer. Because he lacks integrity, he fabricates more lies to try to divert attention from his own corruption. Because he lacks maturity, his childish response is to rely on his phony social media pages to amount tax on others. His favorite of, out of the dozens now is Randy Agate. It's just one of the dozens he used to deceive taxpayers since two thousand and sixteen. So again, what did village attorney Paulo Grady refuse to let the public hear on April seventh in an effort to protect Glotz? And of course, I have to summarize. In disregard of the governor's order on March twenty-seventh, trustee Glotz and a group, group of his political supporters went to former clerk Ray's home to personally deliver birthday cake and cookies. The visit to Ray was just another example of the hypocrisy of elected officials in Tinley Park. While Ray was one of Glotz's prime targets of political and personal attack during the two thousand and seventeen election, he is now one of Glotz's political mentors and confidants. Glotz has abandoned his promises of transparency and honesty in government in favor of the old-time dirty politics that we were so used to and wanted to get rid of. One particular social media discussion began when Tim Janisik posted a comment directed at then-trustee candidate Jeff Vaccaro. Janisik wrote, "Jeff, I'm completely offended that you're trying to sit here and say you don't support bullying. You guys have been getting me to do all your dirty work on all things Tinley and Tinley Park community page for the last three months now. You wanted your servants to do the dirty work for you because you needed to distance yourself from it." Glotz and Therion and others had a conversation on social media about Janisik's posting. Here's what Glotz and Therion wrote. "Glotz, agree, Tim Jay has always is taking it to a new level, he's the devil. Glotz, yes he is, Tim has no boundaries, look at his record, he has no morals. Glotz, alarming that village staff is apparently handing over documents for him to post, the sad state of affairs." Therion, "Yes, for me, that's even more alarming than his behavior. Glotz, Ray in particular acts clueless. Glotz, we can't have village staff releasing private information of the village, village to anybody." After the election, though, it didn't take Glotz long to adopt tactics from Ray's political playbook and begin releasing information acquired through official channels, intending it to be put on social media for Glotz and Therion's political and personal purposes. The summary of those releases is detailed more in the ethics complaint filed August fifth, two thousand and nineteen. It's on the clerk's web page. Two of them deserve note. March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen board meeting, let's remember trustee Mangon's comments about trustee Glotz, describing his cowardice, his manipulation, and his two-facetedness, distorting facts to create a false reality. Second one, after former trustee Yonker submitted his paperwork to clerk Therion on February eighth, two thousand and nineteen, to be removed from the ballot, Janisik posted a fabricated newspaper article announcing Yonker's withdrawal. But it wasn't until days later that that information became official to the public in a FOIA release to Janisik. The bottom line is the trustee Glotz, Therion, and their one Tinley Park political party were stuck with the same old corruption that has plagued Tinley Park for decades. You sit on the dais, I watched the COW meeting, I heard some of the comments and the bickering that goes back and forth, and when I come back, I'm going to bring the emails from trustee Glotz complaining about clerk Ray, former clerk Ray, and former trustee Suggs and their political grandstanding through the use of a property tax seminar. And now he sits here, "Oh, this is all for the people." You folks on the dais need to start looking at where you're spending your money.